Call the meeting to order, please. This is the Village of Riverside Board of Trustees Regular Meeting for Thursday, November 3rd, 2016. The time is 7:00 PM. Please call the roll.
Here. Trustee Ballerine.
Here.
Trustee Collins.
Here.
Trustee Pollak.
Here.
Trustee Settivie.
Here.
Village Manager Francis.
Here.
Village Attorney Mars is with us but not at the table right now. Also present Village, Clerk Haley.
Thank you very much. If you'll please, John.
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome to everyone who's here with us tonight and those watching at home. Hope you'll excuse me, I'm coming off a little bit of a cold, so my throat is kind of, my voice is kind of coming and going. First up tonight is our presentation's in public comment. If there's anybody here who would like to address the board this evening, I just ask that you be recognized by the President, that you make your remarks from the podium so that the folks at home can hear and see what you have to say. First up is a very, very pleasant event. It's an award presentation, and I'm not even going to give it away, I'm just going to have Mr. Bailey, our Public Works Director, step to the podium and announce it.
Good evening. I'm delighted to be here today for something that's kind of rare in the public works world, and that's to share recognition of a department employee from an outside, or by an outside agency. The Chicago Region Tree Initiative, otherwise known as CRTI, recently named Village Forester Mike Collins as its first ever forestry professional of the year. The Chicago Regional Tree Initiative is a collaborative partnership for coordinated action on key issues facing trees. It is the largest such initiative in the country with leading organizations and agencies from across the seven county metropolitan region working together. CRTI is leveraging funding, knowledge, and skills and expertise to build a healthier, more diverse regional forest, and I think that's where Mr. Collins really came in. CRTI Urban Forestry Awards recognize individuals, organizations, and partnerships for going above and beyond in the past year to strengthen our regional forest. In making the award, CRTI cited Mike's accomplishments, including Riverside has some of the best species diversity in the region due to Mike's conscientious planning. Mike led the way in effective volunteer management and resident engagement. He expanded out of standard urban forestry by helping to establish an arboretum. His efforts in risk management, invasive species control, and plant pathology have led to a healthy tree canopy. And Mike's work with CRTI has helped the organization reach out to more than 200 forestry professionals in the region with community tree networks and other educational resources. And as I read this announcement, we received it by email actually, each one of those citations, I thought to myself, "Yeah, I agree absolutely." So, I agree with their basis for awarding this to Mike. I especially appreciate Mike's work with volunteer groups in the village, including the Olmstead Society, scout groups, high school, or school students. Those volunteer groups certainly leverage the Public Works Department's manpower, which is valuable, but they also involve those individuals in the village landscape, which is invaluable. And I think that's the key to really maintaining the village landscape, present, long-term, is resident involvement of all ages. I, and I think I can take the liberty of speaking for all of the trees in Riverside, want to express my appreciation, or our appreciation, mine and the trees' appreciation, to Mike for his care and concern and dedication to the village forest. And with that, I give you Village Forester of the Year, Mike Collins. Here.[274.66][274.66](Applause) Boy, thank you very much. Thanks for the kind words that, I really appreciate that. You know, really in my mind, you know, first and foremost, I'm very honored and humbled to receive something like this from CRTI. I really value them as a partner in terms of working towards the urban forest and improving our canopy. You know, but, one thing I would say is I feel like I share this award with all of you in this room, you know, the village board, especially President Sells, Manager Francis, Director Bailey. You know, without your support, I wouldn't have the resources I need to succeed in this village. You know, Ed spoke to the volunteers, I think that's, you know, bottom line is, they all make me look good, and you all know who you are, so I, you know, I greatly appreciate all the support. Village staff is invaluable, we have an excellent staff here, whether Public Works, you know, Jesus Moran, Carracko, all those guys, they're really tremendous. Yeah, at the end of the day, I'm just, you know, amazed and humbled, I really value working here. To me, this is a premier position as a forester. So, you know, here's to more, more partnership and moving the ball forward. I really do appreciate it, so thank you very much. Oh, and I did bring this, the award along, just for proof, in case, but, either way, thank you very much. I do appreciate you acknowledging this this evening.
And Mike, I just want to say, just on a personal level, you and I have known each other a long time, we've done a lot of volunteer projects together, and I can attest to what Ed was just saying about the inspiration you are through our volunteers, especially the young people that come out to work on this. I cannot think of a better forester that we could possibly have, and, you know, our, we talk a lot about economic development and making this a destination. What has always made this a destination is our beauty. And I have, I hear over and over from people how beautiful our green spaces are, how great our forest is looking, and that's, that's a testament to your skill and your passion, and I really appreciate what you do for us.
Thank you. I thank you, I appreciate that. It means a lot.
Keep at it. Keep at it.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Really appreciate it.
Awesome. Congratulations, Mike.
Thank you, sir.
Next up is public comment. Mr. Gallagher.
Good evening, Mr. President, trustees, those in attendance, and to those watching at home. Sorry I come before you and the village board on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce. It is, sir, my pleasure to inform the public of upcoming chamber events. November 11th, Shamrock Gardens will be having an open house. The public is welcome to attend to that. We will have a grand opening of Pizza Barra, a long-awaited corner of Long Common and Burlington will open on November 15th. Arcade Jewellers, one of our longtime businesses, will have a pop-up store along Burlington at 2 East Burlington, starting from the November 25th through December 3rd. Higgins Glass will have its annual open house on November 26th. And our annual holiday stroll will be on December 2nd. And I'll be back with more details on that at a later date to fill you in on when Santa arrives and who will have what. Between then and now, however, you know, look for the announcement for the grand opening of Saw Milli and a pop-up store from Chocolate Twist. And that's all I have for today. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this evening? Hearing none, we'll move on to reports of village officers. First up is the village president's report. Really the only thing that I would like to say to all of our residents, next Tuesday is an important day. I encourage everyone to vote. It's an extremely important election, everybody knows that. It's our opportunity as citizens to make our voice heard, your vote is your voice. So, whatever else you might be doing that day, take time, please, 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 go out to vote. And that's all I have, Ms. Francis.
No endorsement from President Sells?
(Laughter) I have to live here. Can't wait.
I have nothing to report this evening.
Moving on to the approval of the consent agenda. Are there any items that need to be removed for discussion? Hearing none at Esper.
I don't want to remove something, but I would like to mention something.
Sure.
The preservation minutes, I don't know which ones they were, but one of the, one of the three, they did make a recommendation to the board that we should go back to exposed aggregate because they felt it was historically significant, and I think that, you know, I think we probably should finally make that ordinance, you know, to read that way. We're getting that kind of response from that commission, so we don't have to go through the discussion every time.
We can take care of that next time that comes up, or in the budget discussions. Any other comments? Hearing none, I ask for a motion of second to approve. Motion by Ms. Collins.
Second.
Second by Mr. Settivie. Please call the roll.
Trustee Ballerine.
Aye.
Trustee Collins.
Aye.
Trustee Pollak.
Aye.
Trustee Settivie.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up are reports of departments, commissions, and trustee liaisons. Are there any liaison reports this evening? First then is an estimate of the 2016 property taxes to be levied for the Village of Riverside, Illinois and the Riverside Public Library. Let me just go ahead and read all these, and then Mr. Salinas can do them all. Also is an announcement of public hearing of the 2016 property tax levy ordinance and hearing to be held on November 17th, 2016, and an announcement of public hearing of the 2017 budget ordinance, also on November 17th, 2016. Mr. Salinas.
Okay, good evening, Board of Trustees. Tonight, the village announces its estimate of the 2016 property tax levy, as well as the estimate for the Riverside Public Library. I do want to state that the Illinois Truth in Taxation Law requires that the village calculate a dollar amount of the aggregate property tax levy for 2016. Such calculation needs to be performed no less than 20 days prior to the village board adopting such levy. The 2016 tax levy ordinance is scheduled for adoption on December 1st, 2016. So included in your agenda packets is a worksheet that details the calculation of the 2016 property tax levy estimate for the village. As a non-home rule community, the village's tax levy can only increase by the lesser of 5% over prior year's levy, or the percentage increase in the Consumer Price Index, plus any new growth. Since the percentage increase in the Consumer Price Index was .73% or less than 1%, and is lesser than 5%, the final actual 2016 tax levy is expected to increase approximately .73% plus any such new growth. So keeping all this in mind, following is a tax levy estimate. The estimated 2016 tax levy for the village's cap funds is $4,723,712 and $981,671 for the non-cap funds, for a total levy of $5,705, excuse me, $705,382. Of this total levy amount, $407,063 will be abated, which will result in a net 2016 levy for the village of $5,298,320. This represents an approximate increase of 2.81% over a prior year's final levy of $5,153,588. Now, the Cook County Tax Extension Office will adjust this 2016 levy amount. It is standard practice for non-home rule municipalities like the village to levy for more than the 5% or the percentage increase in CPI, whichever is applicable, to ensure receipt of all potential property tax revenue, with full knowledge that Cook County is going to be reducing the levy amount to the maximum allowed by law. For the Riverside Public Library, the estimated 2016 tax levy is calculated at $1,068,087, which is an increase of approximately 1.81% over a prior year's final levy of $1,049,076. And once again, Cook County will be reducing this levy once the actual new growth is known. Any questions from the board on the tax levy estimate?
So, so for the village, then, we should expect our tax levy to increase by .73?
Slightly higher, once you factor in any new growth.
Okay.
But it, more likely closer to 1%.
1%. Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Okay. So then tonight, the village also announces that a public hearing of the 2016 property tax levy ordinance for the village and Riverside Public Library is to be held on Thursday, November 17th, 2016. Such hearing will occur at 7:00 PM in Room 4 of Township Hall located at 27 Riverside Road, Riverside, Illinois 60546. In accordance with state law, the village will publish notice of this public meeting in the November 9, 2016 edition of the Riverside Landmark Newspaper. At this meeting, I will be presenting the 2016 tax levy ordinances for the village and the public library. Actual adoption of the tax levy ordinances is scheduled for Thursday, December 1st, 2016, and a copy of the public notice and the agenda for the public hearing is included in the board agenda packets. Okay, and the final announcement is the announcement concerning the public hearing on the proposed budget for fiscal year 2017 for the village and public library, which is to be held on Thursday, November 17th, 2016. Such hearing will occur immediately after the public hearing of the 2016 property tax levy is adjourned, and will take place in Room 4 of Township Hall located at 27 Riverside Road, Riverside, Illinois 60546. A notice of this public hearing will also be published in the November 9, 2016 edition of the Riverside Landmark Newspaper. So at this meeting, I will be presenting the ordinances for the annual budgets for the village and public library for the year commencing January 1st, 2017, and ending December 31st, 2017. Actual adoption of these budget ordinances is scheduled for Thursday, December 1st, 2016. And I've also included a copy of the public notice and the agenda for this public hearing in your agenda packets.
Next up are ordinances and resolutions. First, we have an ordinance approving a variation to allow an existing encroaching enclosed front porch and street yard to be unenclosed to create an open front porch at 175 Blooming Bank. Miss App.
Yes, the petitioners at 175 Blooming Bank are seeking a variance in order to unenclose an existing encroaching enclosed front porch. The property is Zoned R1AA. The existing front porch encroaches approximately eight and a half feet into the required street yard. The zoning ordinance allows existing encroaching front porches, whether enclosed or unenclosed, to be restored, rebuilt, reconstructed, replaced, in a street yard only to their existing form, footprint, and depth. Since the renovation will change the form of the existing encroaching porch from enclosed to unenclosed, a variance is required. The Planning and Zoning Commission did conduct a public hearing on this proposed variation on October 26th and recommended approval of the variation. You have a copy of the findings, findings of fact attached to your ordinance. You do have also pictures of what the porch is going to look like, and the ordinance before you. The petitioner is here to answer any questions that you have, as am I.
First I ask for a motion of second to approve the ordinance. Motion by Mr. Ballerine.
So am I.
Second by Ms. Collins. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Trustee Ballerine.
Aye.
Trustee Collins.
Aye.
Trustee Pollak.
Aye.
Trustee Settivie.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, thank you for attending this evening, sir.
When the Plan Commission takes up, I think they're discussing porches, are they going to fix this? I mean, is it?
Yes, this is part of that, well, kind of overall text amendment that we're looking at regarding street yards and porches. And so, part of that text amendment language does include making it so that, since there is a preference for open front porches, to allow encroaching enclosed front porches to be unenclosed without the need to have to go for a variance. And that would be something they would be able to do by right, provided that they're not changing the footprint of the, of the porch, so they're not increasing the non-conformity.
I would, I would also recommend, though, that preservation be involved in that, or at least have a discussion on it, because I do think it does affect the landscape nature, or the landmark nature of it.
They have.
Yeah, they had that conversation.
Great.
Their information.
Okay, good, that's appropriate, thank you. Mr. Pollak?
Since we're talking about, just asking, one more comment, and that's, if we weren't doing this text amendment concurrently, I would say this variation probably should not be approved, because it technically really doesn't meet the standards for a variation. But to expedite it, and for the sake of the petitioner, so they don't have to wait around while we do the text amendment, we can do it, because it'll become null and void essentially, hopefully, when the text amendment is approved.
Good point. Next up is the ordinance approving a special use for indoor recreation, live action entertainment at 3230 South Harlem Avenue, Suites 24A and B, Riverside. That's the home of Vault Escape. Miss App.
Yes, the petitioners, Sarah Campbell for Vault Escape, has applied for a special use in order to expand their existing special use. They, she operates a puzzle escape room on Harlem Avenue. She is looking to add two more puzzle rooms, and so is going to be expanding now into a new unit, so she requires a new special use for this. The Planning and Zoning Commission did hold the public hearing for the expansion of the special use on October 26th and did recommend approval. As I said, they're proposing to go into a new unit, they're currently at 3234, which is where they have the special use for. They're proposing to move into the second floor units above 3230 South Harlem Avenue, where they'll have two additional puzzle rooms on the part of the business. The rooms are not actually internally connected to the existing space, so there will be two separate entrances. That's something that was brought up at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, so I just wanted to point that out to you. They did recommend approval, and you have a copy of the ordinance here for you to discuss, and their findings of fact, and the petitioner is here, of course, to answer any questions that you have.
I ask for a motion of second to approve. Motion by Ms. Collins.
Second.
Second by Mr. Ballerine. Any conversation?
Just one question to clarify, I might have misunderstood you. This is an expansion, so you're maintaining your current space and expanding into adjacent space? Okay, not, not moving the operation.
Are you making the puzzles easier?
I can tell you that.
(Laughter) I'm not coming until you do. Hearing none for the discussion, please call the roll.
Trustee Ballerine.
Aye.
Trustee Collins.
Aye.
Trustee Pollak.
Aye.
Trustee Settivie.
Aye.
Motion carries. Congratulations on your success.
Yes.
Next up is an ordinance admitting Title IX, Section 924, hourly charge for parking in Section 925, parking permit fees of the village code of the Village of Riverside, Illinois. Mr. Salinas.
Okay. So, returning before the board tonight is an ordinance to amend the village code to increase the metered parking fees as well as the permit parking fees. So at the previous meeting, I presented the board with an ordinance that reflected a proposed increase to our metered fees from 35 cents every two hours to 25 cents per hour. The same ordinance also reflected a proposed increase to our commuter permit fees from $105 per quarter to $130 per quarter, and a proposed increase to our 24-hour permits from $150 per quarter to $175 per quarter. So these proposed increases are in accordance with the existing lease agreement between the village and Burlington Northern Santa Fe Railway. So at the previous meeting, the village board requested additional information concerning the fees being charged not only by our neighboring communities, but also instructed staff to generate some alternative proposed rate adjustments for board consideration. So included in this board agenda packet for tonight's meeting is a copy not only of the existing lease agreement with Burlington Northern Santa Fe. Staff also updated a parking fee survey, where we surveyed surrounding communities to see what they charge for similar parking arrangements. And also, we've included a parking fee analysis that lists seven different pricing options for additional board consideration. So I will answer any questions that the board might have concerning any of the information I've included.
So why don't we have a conversation first, in case we want to make any changes? It'll be easier to do that, and then we can have the motion in second. So, you've had a chance to take a look at these things. Any comments, questions, suggestions?
Well, I'm, I'm in favor of raising the, the rates that are subject to the lease amendment to the maximum under that lease arrangement. Might be a little bit ambitious at this point to go for approval for BNSF, but I do think that in the future, that is something we should consider, but not immediately. And then I actually just had a question, and maybe I missed this. What, what is the recommendation on the 24-hour?
So the recommendation?
Option one?
The recommendation is increasing the quarterly fee from $150 to $175.
Okay.
That was the original recommendation, but that's not subject to the lease with BNSF, so the board has.
Got, understood, understood, thank you. And that is, again, to emphasize, that is per quarter, not per month, because I have a couple.
That's per quarter.
Other comments? Excuse me, other comments or suggestions?
I guess another question then, how often can we consider, I mean, it's at our discretion?
I don't, I don't think the existing lease agreement states how frequent we can go back to BNSF to try to increase our rates, I think that's silent.
Or there's not a, once you raise them, you have to wait a year before you consider raising? There's none of that?
Not according to what I read.
And currently, it's inclusive in our agreement of what we're looking at, based on the proposed ordinance as it's outlined, to the maximum that is allowed in our agreement. So if we want to revisit it, we can increase this effective January 1, and then start reaching out to BNSF now, saying we're looking at increasing it potentially to be either mid-year or effective January 1, 2018.
So why don't you read, just, so folks at home can hear us, to, why don't you just run through what the proposal is for the various rates?
Okay. So the proposed, the proposed increase is for the metered spaces to increase it from the existing 35 cents every two hours to 25 cents per hour. For the commuter permits, the proposal is to increase it from the existing $105 per quarter to $130 per quarter. And for the 24-hour permit, increasing it from the existing $150 per quarter to $175 per quarter. And this, we're proposing this increase to be effective January 1 of 2017.
So, is that, any questions about that? All right, I'd ask for a motion of second to approve. Motion by Ms. Collins.
Second.
Second by Mr. Ballerine. Please call the roll.
Trustee Ballerine.
Aye.
Trustee Collins.
Aye.
Trustee Pollak.
Aye.
Trustee Settivie.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Salinas, for the extra word, we appreciate it. Next up is an ordinance admitting Title III, Business Regulations, Chapter II, Alcoholic Liquor of the Village Code of the Village of Riverside, Illinois, relative to alcoholic liquor licenses. This is a brew pub in Class E licenses and the creation of a Class E1 and E2 add-on license and basset training. Miss App.
Yes, back in May of this year, we adopted changes to our village code related to liquor licenses for brew pubs, microbreweries, and craft distilleries. But since then, staff has been approached by two new restaurants that will be serving alcohol in the village, Labara and Safe House Brewing. These two businesses are requesting certain changes to the village's liquor code in order to better serve their customers, and these changes are specific to the Class E and the Class P liquor licenses. The proposed changes to the Class P, which is the brew pub license, will align this license more closely to the Class E restaurant license, which allows licensees to sell alcoholic liquors, not just beer and wine, for consumption on the premises. The owner of Safe House Brewing is requesting to be allowed to serve alcoholic liquors in addition to beer and wine as part of their bar and restaurant services. This is in addition to the craft beers that they'll be manufacturing onsite and serving onsite. Allowing a brew pub to sell alcoholic liquors rather than just beer and wine is allowed by the state code, so we've verified all of that, we're not stepping out of any bounds as far as that's concerned. Now, in regards to the Class E license, Labara is requesting to be permitted to sell at retail packaged liquor for consumption off premises with carryout and delivery orders. The premise here is that if a customer wants to purchase a bottle of wine with their carryout order, that Labara would be able to provide that, and also for delivery orders. So they would like the ability to deliver those orders, you know, with their food, as well as for somebody to come in and do a carryout order with that. The Class E license does not currently allow retail sales or delivery of packaged alcoholic liquors, and therefore requires this code amendment. The owners are also requesting that the license hours for the Class E be amended to start at 11:00 AM rather than noon, and for the hours to be extended to 11:00 PM on Sundays. In consultation with the village attorney, staff is proposing to create two add-on licenses for the Class E, one for the retail sales of packaged alcoholic liquor for consumption off premises in conjunction with a food order. That would be the E1 add-on, and then one for the delivery of packaged alcoholic liquors in conjunction with food orders, and that would be the E2 restaurant delivery add-on license. The regulations will prohibit any sort of floor displays of liquor and will require delivery persons to be basset-trained over 21 years of age, and for them to be checking IDs of the person they are delivering to. Staff has also proposed fees for these new add-on licenses of $450 each. In the case of Labara, those fees would be waived for the first three years per our incentive agreement that we would, that we're, we negotiated with them, and then, that was approved earlier this year. The ordinance also adds a general requirement that all persons involved in the service of alcohol be basset-trained. Basset stands for the Beverage, Alcohol Sellers and Servers Education Training, Education and Training, and is a state of Illinois, respond, pardon me, and it is the state of Illinois's responsible beverage seller, server. Seller/Server Program. So starting back in July of this year, the state law was changed to require all servers in Cook County to be basset trained. So we're just incorporating that into our ordinance as well while we're at it. So you do have the proposed amendments to the liquor code before you, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Ask for a motion and a second to approve.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Setteby. Second by Mr. Pollak. Any questions?
Just, what is the reason why we have two add-ons? We just can't make it one add-on and have it, you know, if you're able to sell retail sales, if you're able to sell liquor inside the place, why, I don't, I'm just trying to figure out why we're making two add-ons, why we just can't and all be under one?
Some may not offer delivery as an option.
Yeah, they're just different type of things and it's possible that some establishments, I know Labara wants them both, but some may just want one and not the other.
But what would be the, what would be the, I mean, I'm just trying to think of what would be the harm of, you know, if Choo Choo didn't deliver but had that capability, I mean, what would, I mean, just, from my standpoint, I just look at $900 cost if you're going to do both. It just seems like that's on top of the regular liquor license. It gets to be pretty pricey.
Sure.
So, I mean, just, I'm just.
Yeah, I mean, I don't see any reason we couldn't take the regulations and combine them in a single add-on if that was everyone's preference. We just need to know the fee.
I mean, that's a good point. I mean, if they had, if they had both capabilities, they'd like back exercise.
Yeah, you don't have to do them both.
And why, yeah, and why?
I was just trying to think of why would you have one?
That's my only thought.
You can, that'd be easy to do.
Absolutely.
Okay, so would that, would that change? Are there any other questions? Do we need to amend the motion for?
If there's a consensus that the ordinance is going to be revised to create a single add-on, is the price just going to be $450 then?
Yeah, I don't, yeah.
Consensus on that?
That's fine.
Please call the roll. Oh, sorry.
On the delivery, it says that they would need to be 18 years of age or older. Is that okay for someone who's 18 to deliver alcohol?
Yes, you're allowed to sell and serve alcohol in Illinois if you're 18 or older.
Okay.
Please call the roll.
Trustee Ballerine.
Aye.
Trustee Collins.
Aye.
Trustee Pollak.
Aye.
Trustee Setteby.
Aye.
Motion carries. And last up, an ordinance authorizing issuance of Class E1. Well, do we, are we just going to have an E1 now?
Sure. Yeah, let's just call it.
An ordinance authorized an issuance of Class E1 add-on liquor licenses for Pizza Bar Riverside LLC doing business as Labara.
And this is just a follow-up to what Director Att just previously presented. Because their existing liquor license is only a Class E, we needed to approve a supplemental ordinance approving this add-on for delivery and retail sales. And they have already conducted their background. Everything has been approved. They've already been issued their Class E, and so we would just have to issue a subsequent license that's inclusive of both the E and the E1 as amended.
Ask for a motion second to approve.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Ms. Collins. Second by Mr. Pollak. Any questions? Please call the roll.
Trustee Ballerine.
Aye.
Trustee Collins.
Aye.
Trustee Pollak.
Aye.
Trustee Setteby.
Aye.
Motion carries. There are no considerations. Does anyone have any new business? We do have need for a short executive session this evening to discuss the purchase of real property and to discuss the sale price of village property. So with that, I'd ask for a motion to return to executive session, not to reconvene. No final action will be taken.
So moved.
President Sals, I believe we have someone who wants to address the board.
I'd like to address the board.
Oh, of course, sir. I'm sorry, sir. I didn't know you were here.
Members of the board, village president, my name is Keith Altavilla. I reside at 732 Leesley Road. I'd like to propose that the current statute, Village Ordinance 6-3-13 and 6-3-14 regarding animals involved in biting incidents be changed from three bites to two bites before a euthanizing order can be issued by the village, and that a household that has had an animal euthanized be prohibited from housing another animal of the same species within the boundaries of the village. As I'm sure you are all aware, there were a number of incidences in August of this year that have brought the topic of vicious dogs to the forefront. This combined with reports of households breeding pit bulls on Quincy Avenue make the subject rather timely. Last year, I was bitten by one of the dogs that were involved in the bite incidents on Leesley Road this summer. All animal bites, all animal bites are serious in nature, and it is completely reasonable that one warning is more than enough considering how life-changing a serious bite can be to those involved, especially if the victim is a child. I probably don't need to remind everybody here that Leesley Road is across the street from elementary school. An amendment almost identical to my suggestion above was proposed by the board, to the board, by then-village president Di Natale back in 1997 and was thwarted by three animal activist board members who saw the changes as not being fair enough to the animals. I submit that had they passed the amendment, of the two attacks that took place last August, 2016, the second attack unfairly resulted in an innocent dog owner being mauled while trying to save his pet as it was being ripped apart in front of him by an animal from a household with a history of vicious attacks. Most responsible owners will take the matter very seriously should their animal be involved in a bite incident and do their utmost to remedy the situation. And we all know that the animals are not to blame and that it is poorly socialized people who are the ones most responsible for raising poorly socialized animals. It is up to the owner of the animal to create a living situation that is fair to the creature they've taken responsibility for. The proposed amendment recognizes this and is an effort to guide animal owners towards responsible behavior that is in the best interest of not just their animals but also the village. Unfortunately, some owners need the motivation of serious consequences looming over them in order to ensure that their animal is not involved in another bite incident. The recent incidents with the dogs on Leesley Road are a sad reminder that regardless of how many opportunities a household is given, some folks will always refuse to do the right thing, often citing that the animal is family or that the circumstances don't reflect their experience with the animal in question, but all the while refusing to seek assistance with training, not using the proper type of collar or muzzle for the animal in question, or refusing to fence in their yard in a suitable manner. If a household truly cares about their animals, they will make sure that their animals are properly trained and socialized. In order to keep the village and its residents safe from people like this who clearly cannot see the forest through the trees of their own indignation, I respectfully suggest that the statute be amended to dictate that the household of any animal that has been involved on leash or off in two or more bite incidences will receive an order to euthanize the animal, and the household who domiciled the animal will be prohibited from domiciling within village boundaries any animal of the same species. I thank you for your consideration on this serious matter, and I hope that you will amend the ordinances cited above as suggested. Doing so will make Riverside a safer place for its residents. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, sir. And you should know that we actually already are looking at amending that ordinance. We've been working with our village attorneys on something very much along the lines that you suggest. So I appreciate your very thoughtful presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Very much. Well, it was chief, it was the chief that suggested, because I asked him, well, what's preventing this household from getting another dog? And in fact, they actually have already bought another dog. Fortunately, I think it's an older rescue, but we'll see how that goes. But I'd asked the chief, like, what can we do to change it? And he suggested, well, you know, write a letter. And I did submit it to the chief, and apparently he did pass it on to the village attorney and yourself. So I just wanted to make sure that that process was rolling.
Totally understand. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Sorry, did you have a motion and second to adjourn?
I'm not sure, so let's, a motion and a second to adjourn. Again, I think you made the motion to adjourn and Mr. Pollak seconded it, and so now you may call the roll.
Trustee Ballerine.
Aye.
Trustee Collins.
Aye.
Trustee Pollak.
Aye.
Trustee Setteby.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you. Good night.